Good evening, this time is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board. Uh, first things first, I'm going to appoint Nelson as a full voting member in place of Bob. Next on is the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report. Robert, what do you have for us?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you, Robert. Item number three would have been the capital of the discussion of capital improvement program for the Merrimack Village District. Robert, I see that they have asked to be pushed to the next meeting on November 2nd?
Yes, that's correct. MVD has requested some additional time for another meeting due to schedule scheduling conflict.
Do we need any kind of a vote to push that, or?
Nope, just as an agenda item, it can just be moved.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going through it quickly, good. Item number four is the LNF Realty Trust. This is Continued Review for Acceptance and Consideration of a Site Plan Amendment to Modify Site Lighting and Add Additional Pavement and Related Improvements. The parcel is located at 396 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, R4 Residential, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. Tax map 4D-3, Lot 032, case number Planning Board 2021-26. This item is continued from the July 7th and August 17th and September 21st meetings. Can you introduce yourself to the board and tell us what you have? Actually, sorry not to cut you off before we get there. Robert, what do you have for us on this?
Uh, no, it's fine. I think ultimately I'm just gonna defer to Matt to make the presentation.
That's what I figured.
Been continued a few times, but this is the first presentation the board is hearing on this, so ultimately I'll just let Matt take over.
Thank you. Matt, could you introduce yourself and tell us what you have?
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates.
Matt?
Mike?
It's green. Oh, no, now it's really green, sorry. Alright, let's do that again. Good evening, Matt Peterson here with Keach Norsham Associates, representing LNF Realty Trust regarding the site violations improvements in front of the board here tonight. Um, my presentation was gonna go as stated by staff, but it seems like staff's leaving it to me, so I will walk through this here. Um, the client received a violation letter for this property back on December 2nd, 2020. Um, the issues in the back of that letter, which I'm just gonna go to the pictures because they're easier for you here, is related to lighting that if you've gone down Daniel Webster Highway, there are three lights. Uh, one for the convenience store, two for this site here. I'm not really sure at what time or when they were put up, but back in the day, it was known through Merrimack that you could call the power company, they would put a light on a pole for you, and then you could pay for that. Um, it's been here, I guess, forever until the client last, I wanna say September, October, had the bulbs replaced to more of the clear white bulb instead of the yellow fluorescent that's been there forever. And I believe at that point, some of butters probably noticed the glare that's coming from thirty-five feet up throughout the site. And the other thing, once staff went out there, it was discovered that there was extra pavement installed in the back for parking of a few vehicles that were there. So, uh, staff wrote this letter to them, uh, they then reached out to K&amp;A, uh, they signed a contract on February 11th of this year. Uh, unfortunately for me and for this company that I work for, it's been just a crazy year. We've been working through with staff on this. Uh, we actually did submit a preliminary application to DPW to review. They didn't like the leaching catch basins that we had proposed, so we went back to the drawing board. The plans that are in front of you now, I believe, meet DPW's requirements. Um, however, it was brought to my attention yesterday that my lighting guy used regular wall packs that looked like cutoffs, but that are not full cutoffs, even though the plan says full cutoffs on it. So, I have sent that back out to Sharon Lighting to have it cleaned up correctly, so that it's all meets Town of Merrimack requirements. Um, I still, just so the board knows, I think staff has recommended that we come back on the November 2nd here. We asked, we do have a waiver for lighting. I will still be asking for that waiver from lighting, but it's based on uniformity ratio throughout the site. I don't wanna light up the whole site with, uh, site lighting. I wanna utilize the existing building with the wall packs, so my light does not shine out as far, so I don't meet all the town requirements. But I will specifically show you all that when I have the revised lighting plan from Sharon at the next hearing that we go through. Just to quickly have you go through the site plan here. This is the existing conditions plan that we had put together for the submittal. Originally, I'd asked for a full site plan waiver, but we have substantial amount of information that we had had from past, and then we picked up some of the new information here, so we basically have a full existing conditions plan now. Uh, so we no longer asking for full site plan waiver on this application. What we're proposing is, you can see, oh, let me go back one sheet. Alright, here's a site plan. In the back area here is the extra pavement that was added. It's approximately forty-six hundred square feet. Um, our drainage report, I think it's forty-six eighty-two, somewhere around that, but about forty-six hundred square feet of extra pavement in the back area. As I said at the previous proposal, there's an existing leaching catch basin right here on site. Um, it's been here forever. I think we all know, if you take a look at the aerial photo that was here, uh, the aerial photo that was beforehand, I have quite a bit of sand on this side of the Merrimack River there. We felt that leaching catch basins worked well, but again, DPW asked us to look at something different. So, we've modified it to keep the existing leaching catch basin, but replace it, make sure, inspect it, clean it out, make sure it's working the way it is. However, for the added pavement that he put there, we are proposing an infiltration basin on the southerly side of the property. We are also proposing a piece of curbing that will go down along the edge of the pavement that they installed. That curbing will direct the water to a sediment for bay in the front here that is riprap, and then an infiltration basin in the back that's here. Um, that has reduced all of our pre and post numbers from DPW. So, again, in your package, there was a waiver originally on drainage design and meeting pre and post requirements. I have now met pre and post requirements on the new submittal that we made to DPW. Uh, again, you don't have those reviews and comments back yet, but we did meet all of that for each storm to address what they were looking for on the application. The lighting plan, as I stated before, what we'd like to do is propose the wall packs on the existing building in the front, and then the one, two, three, four, five, six around the existing buildings that's there. As you can see, there's gonna be no lighting up in the back in some of the new paved areas. That's what I'll be talking to you about, the uniformity thing at the next hearing and the waiver that we're requesting. If the board is not looking, or would rather we not look for a waiver, what we'd have to do is propose a pole in the back there and run some underground electric to it. It's not the end of the world, I just, I didn't think it was really necessary on this site.
Mr. Peterson, just one second. Robert, what do you have?
So, just on the waiver discussion, uh, when we started, as Matt had talked about, we talked about going forward, or he submitted it as a full site plan, but given that the plan's intent really was only to address the issues that were cited in the violation letter, uh, we, working with the applicant, feel it is appropriate to do a waiver of full site plan on this. If the board feels the same way, the other waiver requests that Mr. Peterson's provided would fall under that waiver of full site plan review, so you don't need to act individually on those. At which point, the lighting requests that Matt's talking about would get lumped in and addressed.
Thank you, Robert. Continue, Mr. Peterson.
So, up in the right-hand corner on this plan, you'll see the wall packs that my staff used. Um, again, he was under the impression that this was a full cutoff, and that's just not the case for that. So, what we're gonna propose is wall packs that look like this, that are completely down, full cutoff. Um, the second sheet is here, you can see how they're angled straight down to the ground. Um, it's a rad, same type of system that we have, but much cleaner. So, this is the one we've sent out to Sharon to put on the building, and they'll meet the requirements that the town has for lighting. I'm gonna keep it short, that's really all I had. Um, again, Robert wanted me to give the presentation because it's been a few months, and again, that's completely on me. I apologize, we've been working through as best we can on this. The client's been wonderful. Um, he has not been pushing back, he's paying his bills and moving forward and understand what needs to be done and wants to get rid of the violations, so. Um, I'll leave it at that right now and open up for com- comments from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Board members, we can either jump into, uh, questions, or we have yet to, um, vote on the complete list of his application. Go ahead, Nelson.
Well, I have questions.
Yes, go ahead.
If you wanna go there, uh, I wanted to ask about the, uh, the pole lighting in the front. Is that included in your lighting calculation?
Those lightings will be taken out. As part of this, once this gets approved here, those two that are up on the existing poles will be shut off and pulled off. And he'll stop paying for those lights.
Okay, good. Okay, and, um, the other thing was, we're wavering full site plan review on this, is that not correct?
That's what staff recommends.
Pardon?
That's what staff recommends, correct.
Yes, that is the goal.
If we choose to.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I wanted to, uh, ask if any consideration was given to adding sidewalk here, because that would normally be a part of our, uh, requirements if this were, uh, from the start.
Hmm.
I have not on this site here, Nelson. As you know, I try to continue sidewalks as best as I can up and down the road here. Um, I was looking at the violations on this with the site where we have, you know, we've got the existing gravel, um, that I'm not sure at what point this gravel was required or put in, but I think at some point, they were trying to keep the cars from probably being right up on the road, um, with staff. It would just be these two, it would basically be replacing the gravel with the sidewalk that's there. Yeah, I haven't, haven't, I don't know what else is in that area on either side. I don't know if you were trying to keep it on the north side, south side, but yeah.
Well, one side, you already put a sidewalk. You guys did the site plan next door, so there's a sidewalk that just dead ends at this property.
Hmm.
Uh, right, one, two, three, four sites. So, if you look at the aerial there, so you got the house next to us, then the next house, then the next house, and then that house. So, there's four houses in our property. So, I hear ya, I did put, the sidewalk we have is here.
Well, then there's the, uh, the, the other gas station.
Right here.
Yeah, that has a sidewalk.
Really?
Yes.
Just in this little front area you're saying here, the little?
Just in the front, yeah, that's all, that's all I'm asking, yeah.
Alright, I will, uh, ask that question to the applicant, and when I come back, I will have an answer for you, understanding where you stand.
Okay, thank you.
Is it all, is that all you have, Nelson?
That's all I have for now.
That's fine, that's fine. Ms. Healy?
In my preview, I was, um, a little confused as to what exactly they're bringing forward to us, other than the question regarding, uh, being out of compliance. So, what's the ultimate goal for this company?
The two things that the violations are for was for the lighting that is existing on DW Highway that's off our property, so have proper lighting on our site and take those off, as Nelson said. And the second one was that there was extra pavement installed.
Okay.
At the time they installed it, they didn't.
So, you're only here for the violations, they're not doing anything else to land?
Correct.
Because I see in some older minutes here, they were talking about expanded parking and vehicle storage.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
The extra pavement was probably put there for the extra parking and storage.
Yeah, that's why I was a little confused as to what the actual ask was. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr.
Ultimately, the additional pavement, essentially the violation where the letter was sent, because the additional pavement resulted in an increase in drainage offsite runoff, which they never accounted for by doing an engineering review of that. So, it's ultimately correct the lighting and account for that additional runoff.
Is it all, Ms. Healy? Barbara?
Yeah.
That's it? Yeah. Any other board members? Robert, do we want to, uh, accept this and start the clock before you guys are confident that?
I'm, I'm confident at this stage that the plan can be accepted as complete, knowing full well that the lighting solution is well underway, and I am comfortable with that action, feeling like the applicant will have a plan that's ready for conditional approval, should the board deem that action appropriate at the next time we meet.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Board members, questions or any actions?
Um. Go ahead.
I'll move, we accept the application as substantially complete.
Motion to accept by Ms. Christensen, do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Anketell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Opposed.
All abstaining? That's five, one, zero. To accept it for completion. Next, board members, I mean, it's up to you, but, I mean, they're asking to be moved to the next meeting, I believe, Robert. Um, the November, this wasn't being pushed to December, correct?
Second.
So, staff was concerned that the November meeting was too quick a turnaround time? The board can discuss that with the applicant, but our submittal date for that meeting, I think, comes up, uh, it's, it's already passed, and we're gonna be writing waivers for, or memos for that stuff next week. So, I don't know if that's enough time for them to turn a plan around and get it in.
And, Mr. Peterson, there is no second meeting in November, so you'd be being pushed all the way back to December 7th.
Rather just deal with it and I can work with Robert and have everything ready for that December 2nd, so that's easy.
December 7th.
We're already behind a date, you guys are busy.
Okay.
Just to push it to November 2nd, I think it would be, it'd be better to go December.
So, December 7th?
December. Correct. Do I hear a motion, board members?
Uh, I would open for public comment, just in case, first.
Yeah, okay. Uh, seeing that, I'm gonna open the floor for, uh, public comment. If any of the, uh, members of the public would like to step forward and speak on this issue. Going once, going twice. Seeing nobody stepping forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, board members, Mr. Disco.
Okay, yeah, I, I wanna go on record here as saying that I feel a sidewalk is appropriate here and should be part of this site plan.
Okay.
And that's the reason I voted against moving it, uh, against the acceptance of a full.
Okay.
As a full site plan, thank you.
I see that, especially where it's located, being in the center of town. I think, um.
I think you got a consensus here.
Yeah, that would be a discussion we would absolutely have prior to any movement on this.
Matt hears us.
Okay.
I'm sure Mr. Peterson saw that coming. A motion.
You wanna do it this time?
No, what, uh, what is the motion being requested?
To push it to the December 7th meeting.
I will, uh, so moved.
So, moved by Mr. Disco.
Yeah.
Seconded by Ms. Healy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? That's six, zero, zero, to push it to the December 7th meeting. Mr. Peterson, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too.
Enjoy the game later.
Next on the agenda is item number five. Gary and Diane Cudalis, Review for Acceptance and Consideration of a Site Plan to Construct a 6,000-square-foot Equestrian Training Facility and Related Site Improvements. The parcel is located at 102 Joppa Road in the R2 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 6C, Lot 388, case, Planning Board number 2021-37. This item is continued from the December 21st Planning Board meeting. Once the applicant's all set up, would you mind just introducing yourself? And while he's doing that, Robert, can you let us know if you have anything on this?
On this, I do. Um, my understanding is Tim and Casey did the review work on this one prior to this, and it sounds like there were a number of waivers that need to be requested. I believe the board has some of them in their packets, but there are still three that we do not have a written waiver request for. Uh, those are from section 3.08.1C.15, and I can go through this later. Um, requiring that proposed exist, uh, proposed and existing driveways as part of a site plan need to be constructed to town standards, which do require them to be paved, applicant is currently showing gravel. Uh, section 4.12.1A, which requires an existing conditions plan to show the entire boundary. The large-scale version of the, uh, existing conditions plans does not show the entire boundary, but they do have a smaller locus plan that, to staff's understanding, does not meet the intent of the regulation there. The last one being section 4.12.1C.18, which is, uh, that several items on the existing condition plan need to be field-located, which, um, is not the case. There must be a note on the plan that I'm not aware of that negates that. So, I believe Casey has reached out to the applicant, and I'm sure the applicant will address this, uh, about waiver requests for these, which the board should consider as a part of this. In staff's memo, there are other waivers that are listed as a part of this.
Hmm.
Um, for a landscape plan, um, identifying trees larger than fifteen inches in diameter, illumination plan, and traffic impact analysis. Finally, in the memo, Casey happened to mention a waiver for parking lot mitigation. Um, but in discussing that, that doesn't really apply to this site. That's really more intended for a larger commercial site where the parking lot is clearly visible. So, this, the waiver from section 3.11.1L that Casey mentions is not applicable.
Hmm.
So, I'll try to reference this later on as we go through, because there's a number of things here.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
Yep, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Geida. I'm a wetlands and soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and working with the Cudalises on this, um, site plan for Horse Arena. Um, as far as the waivers go, I did email, um, I know there was this recent, uh, staff reviews, and earlier this evening, I think it was probably around four, four-thirty, I emailed, um, those requests, those additional requests, and I also have hard copies here that I can pass off to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
We'll share.
Alright. Um, I'm showing this on my screen, I'm not sure if it's.
Justin's getting it.
He's coming out right now. Thank you, Justin.
So, um, as far as the waiver requests, um, I don't know how the board wants to go through it, if you want me to address them one at a time, or just go through a brief overview first and then, and then go into those?
Yeah, if you wanna give a brief overview of the, uh, plans in total, and then we'll get to the waiver requests.
Yeah, um, so this is, um, it's a twenty-three acre parcel, um, and the house is right here, and there's an existing, um, horse barn right here, um, with paddocks, um, also here. And the proposed, um, indoor arena is, uh, is right in this area here. So, essentially, it's the same use. There's a residence and there's a, a horse barn, um, and there'll be, um, just a little bit of additional cupboard area for a training facility, um, with a maximum of up to ten horses. Um, right now, there's, uh, ten stalls in the existing barn, um, and there's no proposed, um, shows, um, you know, or that kinda things that would facilitate additional parking or sanitary facilities or anything like that. All of that, um, remains in the existing, um, house here. Um, and the proposed, um, driveway would basically, uh, utilize the existing drive down to the barn, and then just, um, spin off to here into this, um, open area over here. Um, it's, um, fairly straightforward. I did the work here as far as the, um, the wetlands delineation. It's a, um, it's quite a flat lot, um, so there's not a lot of energy or runoff or things like that that we normally worry about as far as stormwater, um, and those types of things. So, um, I think it's relatively straightforward. Um, again, the use is the same as far as, like, some of the waivers, the lighting, things like that are not really applicable in this situation. It's, it's a, although it's, it's a neighborhood area, it's, it's quite rural and wooded in this, in a large lot, with the, the remainder being, um, primarily wetlands, um, off this area here in this green area, um, is being unchanged. So, really, the only proposed change is in, in this area here. I'm gonna open it up to questions. Um, I think it's, uh, fairly self-explanatory, and, um, if anybody has any particular concerns, it's, it's easier to focus on that than, than shotgun approach.
Go ahead, Mr. Disco.
Well, okay, my concern with it was the fact that the, uh, the existing conditions plan and, and the proposed improvement plan, uh, neither of them show the boundaries of the property, and that.
Yeah.
I think that's been pointed out by the staff.
Sure.
I don't know what you're gonna do about that, but.
Yeah, we, I mean, we did, we did make some changes here, um, and I have on the, on the board here, the original ones. Um, so here, um, is where, you know, it wasn't shown as far as the existing conditions plan.
Yeah.
Um, you know, this didn't show it because of this. So, we basically just shifted the, the plan down, so you can see it here. It looks like there's nothing here, basically because it's flat. You know, normally, you'd see a lot of contour lines.
Yeah.
Um, there's this existing tree line here, and you'll see that it slopes down gently here, and then it's essentially flat, you know, all the way across to the rear of the lot.
Is it wooded?
It's wooded, yes, with the exception of this right here, this tree line.
Okay.
Um, which I can flip to on the board here.
But I don't know where the property lines are in relation to that. What's bothering me is.
He's, he's got it there.
No.
Which we don't have.
So, that's one of the waivers we're looking for. Down here is the, um, is the inset plan, the over, overview. So, again, um, here's, you know, we're showing, this section is here, is, is right in here.
Oh, this inset, I didn't see before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the remainder here is, is, is really all, all woods and, and wetlands. So, there's no changes, um, all those bearings and dimensions are shown here. Um, there's quite a few, um, some of these boundaries are stone walls. Um, there's a number of, of course, you know, along this area, um, you know, different drill holes, pipes, things like that, which, um, again, we're really not anywhere near. Um, that boundary's not changing, um, and all.
But I couldn't see it from the plan you submitted, that's.
Um, well, this was, I think this was on there, I, I believe.
The inset is on there, Nelson.
It just doesn't, so one of the waivers is to, uh, I believe the boundary issues.
Okay.
Like the boundary monuments, things like that, um, and features on the, on the entire lot. So, again, it's a large lot, twenty, I think it's about twenty-three acres, and, um, we felt it just, you know, it wasn't really applicable to the, to the request. Um, they're not proposing anything in that area, so, um, and to us, it felt like it would be a, a little bit of a hardship to have to go in there and, um, and detail that whole area, um, for no.
I wanted to see the setbacks. I think you showed them here, pretty much.
Yeah, so in the area here that we're working, here's all the setbacks, and this goes, whoops, um, to the rear lot, you know, and the side setbacks here.
Uh-huh.
So, um, there's, there's quite a, quite a large area here that, um.
Okay, I, I, I missed that, and, uh, the only other thing I saw was that on the existing conditions plan, there's this pool with the house, and that disappears in the improved plan.
Oh, uh, right in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. I, let me just see here. Yeah, um, am I sure, is the pool still there? That's why it disappeared.
Okay, little note saying to be removed or something, okay.
At the time, so this, this project, um, started a few years ago.
Yeah.
And we were, we were looking at different options, and, um, as it progressed, um, evidently, the pool has been taken down, so.
That's on purpose, thank you. Uh, so, um, that's, those were my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Disco. All right, board members, do we want any more questioning before we get into the waiver requests? Ms. Healy, go ahead, please.
Actually, my question doesn't have anything to do with the site plan per se, but having lived across the street from a tobacco field in Connecticut, where they put manure every spring, what is the plan for dealing with the twelve horses and their solid waste? Because I don't see anything on the, on the, that shows a.
Right.
Recomposting or whatever area.
Yeah.
What do you do with them?
Yeah.
Because we don't want, you know.
Sure, I, I mean, frequently, it's, it's stockpiled and spread, but that's something that perhaps, um, the Cudalises had.
So, so there won't be more than ten horses, not actually a seven stall?
Uh, Mr. Geida, if she can just come up and.
She's gonna talk to the microphone.
Introduce herself and speak into the microphone.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Diane Cudalis. Um, it's my, it's myself, my husband, and my daughter, and the facility will be run by my daughter. Um, so, we have a seven-stall barn currently, and we have a, a, an area for ten horses. We have some outdoor, uh, lean-tos for the three others. Um, currently, we're composting because we have a lot of area on our own property.
Right.
To grow grass and things like that, so we've just been composting like crazy. Um, plus, you, um, can compost to use for gardens, but you have to have a section, and they have to sit for two years, and then you use it to grow gardens, so we would allow farmers to take what they need. Um, that's the, that's the short-term plan for now. If we got to where it was excessive, we would bring on a trailer and we would offload it off of the property.
I was just concerned about.
Horse manure versus cow manure is very different. Horse manure, once it dries, it doesn't smell.
Good.
Cow manure, it lingers, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Healy, was that all?
That was it, thank you.
Robert, look like you had something to say.
Uh, I was just going to recommend that the board take up the can, the, uh, question of acceptance before moving on to anything else.
Board members, is anybody opposed to that?
So moved.
So, moved by Ms. Healy, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Disco to accept the application as complete. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining, that's six, zero, zero, to accept the. All opposed? All upstanding, that's 600, to accept the application as complete. Nelson, did you have a question?
No.
That was just a second. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Geina.
So, yeah, just, I'm not sure if you got comments yet from the Conservation Commission. We did go, I met with them the other week, and they didn't have any issues as far as the proposal, and they were going to send a letter to that effect, but we haven't seen it yet either.
Robert, do we have anything to that effect?
I do. From Steve Perkins, Chair of the Merrimack Conservation Commission, they basically summarized it by saying MCC has no concerns with this project.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, if they weren't building the arena, they wouldn't have to come to us at all, correct? Is that for the residential zoning?
Right, so this is, the, the riding arena is a protected use under state law as an agricultural use, so this is allowed where it is. However, the town has the rights to require site plan approval for it, so we get to oversee how it's developed.
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, it might be useful to point out to people in the audience who don't recognize that this is an agricultural use protected by state law, and even though it's in a residential zone, it is not limited by the other requirements of residential zoning. I think, you can elaborate on that, please, Bob, but...
So, state law allows certain agricultural uses to be conducted on any lot in the town, whereas a town zoning ordinance lists normally in a residential district or various other districts which uses are allowed in that district. So in this case, because state law essentially over, it, it supersedes the town's ordinance by allowing this use no matter where it takes place. So that's why this, this use is allowed to take place on the residential lot. However, it still is subject to a site plan approval process with the planning board, so they can have their conditions and make sure the site is developed in an orderly fashion in accordance with the town's regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Geina, if you'd like to go through the waivers one at a time?
Waivers one at a time.
Yeah, before we open up any kind of a public session. And Robert, as he's going through them, please step in whenever you feel you need to.
So from, from the existing waivers that you had from the initial submission, illumination, Section 4.16 illumination plans require the applicant shall submit to the town sufficient information in accordance with Section 3.13, the form of an overall exterior lighting plan to enable the town to determine that the applicable provisions will be satisfied. And we respectfully request that the board waive the requirement for illumination plans for the proposed equestrian facility. The project proposes to utilize an existing barn with existing lighting as depicted on the site plan. The existing lighting will provide ample lighting to access and parking around the barn. The proposed operation will be a low-intensity use with a maximum of 10 horses boarded on site. Two of the boarded horses will be owned by the property owner for riding lessons. This use is unlike other commercial options, so our client would like to keep lighting levels down and just to utilize the existing lights. When the indoor riding arena is built, the barn lighting will provide light in that direction, and a new light will be installed at the entrance to the building, and this will be a fully compliant fixture. Due to the unique proposal and low intensity of the use, we are hereby requesting a waiver from the lighting and illumination plan and the associated standards as outlined in Section 4.16. And strict conformity to the regulation would cause an unnecessary financial hardship to our client and would change the feel of their smaller equestrian operation. For these reasons, we believe granting this waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Section 4.17, traffic impact analysis. The applicant shall submit traffic impact information based upon the standards set in Section 3.14. And we respectfully request that the board waive the requirements for traffic impact analysis for this proposal, for this proposed equestrian facility. The proposed operation will be a low-intensity use with a maximum of 10 horses boarded on site. There will be no events or shows on the site, and traffic for this operation will be minor and infrequent. Due to the unique proposal and low intensity of the use, we are hereby requesting a waiver from the traffic impact analysis and the associated standards as outlined in 3.14. And strict conformity with the regulation would cause an unnecessary financial hardship to our client. For these reasons, we believe that granting this waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And the, the three additional requested waivers, the Section 3.08(c)(5) having to do with driveways. The proposed existing driveways that are upgraded as part of the site plan development shall be constructed to the structural section standards as follows. One and a half inch wearing course, two and a half inch base course, six inches crushed gravel, and 12 inches of bank run gravel. We respectfully request that the board waive this requirement for the following reasons. The intent is for the proposed access to the riding arena to be finished with crushed gravel. The 12 inches of bank run gravel and six inches of crushed gravel layers required by the town ordinance will be installed. The gravel surface will fit in visually and will, with the use for the site. The design will be structurally sound and will be able to support the weight of any fire department apparatus. Strict conformity to the regulation would cause unnecessary financial hardship for our client by requiring them to install a wearing course to the drive. And for these reasons, we believe granting this waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Section 4.12a, the existing conditions plan shall show the following. The boundary of the entire lot showing bearings to the nearest second and distances to the nearest tenth of a foot on all property lines. We respectfully request the board waive this requirement for the following reasons. The boundary information currently shown includes monuments found at the lot corners, property lines, setbacks, and stone walls, and these features are depicted within the proximity to the area to be developed. The overall view provides the bearings and distances of the entire lot to the accuracy required by the regulations. Requiring the entire boundary to be depicted would not provide useful information and would cause a financial hardship for our client. And we believe the information provided is adequate for the purposes of this site plan. And for these reasons, we believe granting this waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And the last one, Section 4.12(c)(18). The existing plans shall show the following existing features. And we, again, respectfully request that the board waive this requirement for the following reasons. The existing conditions plan shows all the existing features, including a pool that's not there, located in proximity to the proposed area to be developed. This includes, but is not limited to, stone walls, tree lines, buildings, and impervious areas. Requiring the existing features to be shown for the entire 23-acre property would cause an unnecessary hardship and provide no benefit to the site plan review. The southwestern portion of the site is, is wetlands and would not be impacted with the proposed riding arena. And for these reasons, we believe granting this waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
And that's it? Thank you, Mr. Geina. Robert, any input before we start asking?
So, at this point, no, but I want to speak after the board takes some action on these. If these are granted, it will require some amendments to any condition of approval if the board were to take that action.
Okay. I think we'd like to hear from the public before we take action on any of the waivers. Everybody agree?
Yeah.
That being said, I'd like to open up the public session. Any members of the public, please step forward if you have anything to say on this matter. Either up there or up here, ma'am, whatever you're comfortable with. Please just introduce yourself.
Sandra Mayo, my husband Claude, we're at 8 Beaverbrook Drive, Lot Number 402. We just have two concerns. The first is when they talked about the lighting. Where the exist, how this thing is set up, where they're putting the 10 or 12 parking spaces, when a car pulls into that parking space, it's going to directly, their headlights are going to be directly in my bathroom, my bedroom, because we're back-to-back to you. We're right, right now, I can currently see your house, your barn. 8 Beaverbrook, we're right behind you, back-to-back. Our trees and your trees, we're back-to-back. So currently, I can see your house. I can see the red existing barn. So my concern was lighting, that from headlights or whatever is going to, like I say, shine into our bedrooms, our bathroom, my backyard, what have you.
Understandable.
So we were, we were wondering if you could put a stockade fence in front of those parking spaces so that when the cars pull up, their headlights are going to hit against a fence and not through my house. So that was, that was one concern. The second concern we have, you mentioned about horse manure, and it's different from cow manure. You're correct, it is. However, horse manure will draw vermin, horse flies, and other insects...
Mrs. Mayo, would you address us, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
She mentioned about horse manure being different from cow manure, and she's correct. But horse manure will attract vermin, horse flies, and those, those kinds of things. And we're concerned with how is pest control going to be addressed? And who's going to be responsible for it, and who's going to monitor it that it's being done? So that was our second concern. And the other was hours of operation. Is this going to be an all-time thing? Is it, or is it going to be like nine to five, or however? So those were our concerns, the lighting coming through our, to our home, and pest control and sanitation.
Thank you, ma'am. We will bring those up with the applicant. Any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Could, before we do, could, could I, I was unable to locate your property on this...
On Lot Number...
Right here.
I'm Lot Number 402.
This is four...
We've got a... You got it.
402 here.
Did you find it, Barb? It's right, yeah, directly behind. Ma'am, please, introduce yourself and then tell us what you have.
My name is Sue Williams. Sean Fagan and I live at 10 Beaverbrook Drive. We live next door to Claude and Sandy Mayo, and our property abuts these homeowners here. And a couple, yeah, last year or the year before, there were a bunch of trees taken down on their property, and now we can see everything. So lighting is a huge concern for us, traffic, and on a warm day, even with the two horses, they say they have the smell. It's tough right now. So I'm concerned, we're concerned, if they have 10, 12 horses there, and that manure is not properly removed or disposed of, that could become an issue for us, because we're like below them. So they're like up here, and we're down here. Between us is a creek, right, the wetlands, and it goes off over here, and there's a lot of natural, there's animals and every, wild animals through there. So we're just concerned about that. We want everybody to do and be happy and do what they want on their own property. We just want to make sure that what someone else does just like us, it doesn't impact your quality of life, right? So that's all that we ask for when you think about this. And when I did some research, a horse, one horse produces 50 pounds of manure per day. That's one horse. So we're just kind of, we're just kind of concerned about that. And then, again, like the Mayos mentioned, you know, the lighting and the hours of operation. And instead of like a stockade fence, because I think that would not fit in the surroundings to make it natural, we would like to see them put a buffer of spruce trees, which would be more natural. They could offset them and have them a few deep, right? And those, they would grow, and spruce trees keep their leaves or their needles all year, so they don't fall off like the trees we have back there now, like maples and oak and stuff like that. So that's all that we have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? Sir, please introduce yourself and...
Roger Van Werit at 94 Joppa Road. And I, when I looked at the plan, we're at 389, I believe, but I couldn't find it when I went to the office to see, and it appears that it's in the southwest area. So it only showed about half of our property. I was always a little concerned of whether, you know, where it was going to be built. The concerns that we would have are with the aquifer and how that would be impacted. I mean, he was mentioning that it shouldn't be impacted because of the slope of the land, and I think that may be, just, you know, concerned with what's happening in our town with the PFASs and things like that that are affecting it, and hope that, you know, we don't have any issues with whether it's composting or smells that come from it, and whether the lighting is another issue, whether the lighting is going to affect us. There's been some concern there, so those are, you know, valid concerns. Let's see, the parking and driveways, I guess that's been addressed right now. It shouldn't be an issue that I see lighting could be an issue. The traffic we're concerned about, and, you know, if we have, right now, the traffic has increased quite a bit in the town. We've been in the town for about 35 years or close to it, and we've seen a major increase in traffic, and that, the traffic isn't just going 30 miles an hour with the speed limit. It's, traffic is going more like 40 or 50 miles an hour, and we're right on a corner, so they come flying around the corner and, well, you know, if they have to park outside their property, then, you know, that could be an issue, where they might hit some of the cars that are parked there. If they're parked down by the paddock or by the, wherever it is they park there, it probably won't be an issue, but that would be a concern too. And then the, let's see, oh, the easement. What is the issue with the easement? I noticed that was on the, one of the items. Yeah, it was listed as an easement issue.
I'm not seeing one. Robert, do you have?
I'm looking into it. I'm not aware of that.
I didn't notice. We'll look into that, sir, if you have any more items to bring up, please.
I guess it's just the, you know, the waivers for all these other departments having to look at it, that, you know, once those are approved, would be in agreement. Oh, I think it's on page four, the update note, number 11, to indicate what kind of easement is referenced.
Correct, yeah, I just found it. Note 11 on even the cover sheet of the plan says Lot 6C-388 is subject to a 50-foot-wide easement that benefits Lot 6C-387, and it gives the recording information at the Registry of Deeds, but it does not indicate what type of easement it is subject to. It just says that there's an easement there.
Okay. We'll bring that up with the applicant, sir.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to step forward? Sir, please, introduce yourself and tell us what you have.
Hi, Claude Mayo, 8 Beaverbrook Drive. Just a couple of questions. I think it would be to the town, not so much to them. If their business grew, and they're saying now they'll have no shows and this and that, would they have to go back to you to get a permit or whatever you call it, to increase their business and enlarge their property again?
Yes.
They would. They couldn't just make it a more of a business. I know it's agriculture, but more of a business.
They would have to come back for a whole new site plan.
Correct. So this plan, they're saying that there's not going to be any shows, anything like that. If they decide to expand to do that in the future, they would have to come back to the board for... board for approval for that, and you would all get noticed again.
Uh, my second question is, where it's agriculture and hypothetically known, no bad feelings, if this doesn't work out, and it's agriculture, could they move in and have a, a complete working farm back there now that's agriculture? Without going to you, the town, and getting us all in on it?
Potentially. I'm not as familiar with the agricultural laws for, for that end of it, um, but farming is a very protected right in New Hampshire, so it's, it's possible that they could do, convert over to that.
So they could put a pig farm or anything back there?
So, that'd be a commercial operation. So, commercial operation like that, it, I guess it depends what type of farm is, would happen. Like, a pig farm is a definite commercial operation, they would probably have to come back to us for that. But if it's just them planting some crops and whatnot, then that may not need to come here.
Okay. I've any animals. Now, if, uh, you said they'd have to, it's a commercial, well, isn't what they do in training and causing, and, uh, people are paying for this service, commercial?
Yeah, no doubt, yep.
So why is, why is that, and they'd have to come back to you?
They have to come to the, so because it's a commercial aspect, the, the town has rights to enforce site plan requirements upon them, but we can't, from a zoning perspective, say it's not allowed to happen in the residential district.
So basically, they'd still have to come back to you if anything changes?
Right.
Just like moving it, the business forward?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? Going once, going twice, and I will close the public hearing for now. Mr. Guida, if you please.
Thank you.
So the first one I'd like to get through, which I think would cover a lot of these, the hours of operation, pick-up, drop-off times, what are you looking at there?
I'm going to ask the applicant.
Mm-hmm. And Ms., if you please, just introduce yourself and then get into the answer.
So my name is Carly Kadelis, and the daughter of Diane and Gary, who own the property. So, in terms of oper- hours of operation, um, like we mentioned, it's a very small facility. It's not like your traditional, you know, busy boarding lesson facility. So we currently have, we had two horses on property, we just added a third. I still own all three. And, at most, we can teach three lessons a day, at most, currently. Um, that's not happening. I'm teaching two right now for the whole week, so traffic is going to be very minimal, consistently. Um, at most, like, um, we've mentioned, we're going to have boarders, so they may be coming in and out to see their horses, but again, they're not going to be there all day, every day, all seven days a week. Um, so, I live on property, so I don't have to drive to this place, so I'm, they are taking care of the horses, nobody's leaving in and out to take care of them, essentially.
Hmm. So just to re- reiterate, um, times people are arriving to the property, times people are leaving from the property, just getting more towards the, uh, lighting issue, the traffic issue, stuff like that.
Right. So in terms of like hours of operation, it would be from ten AM to five?
So we're not looking at it at early morning drop-offs?
So we're not looking at a lot of, especially during the winter, because we don't have the indoor arena yet, like we've talked about. Um, I can't teach at night anyway, so the lights aren't even on.
Okay.
Um, I don't remember the last time we had the lights on at all, so.
Okay. Board members, clarifications?
Uh, just to clarify what you just said, you, you said you can't do it right now because you don't have the facility up? But once the facility is up, then how does that change your hours of operation?
So, the indoor will help mainly with, um, well, especially this year in the summer, because it's been raining consistently, I haven't been able to teach outdoor lessons, so in terms of, um, the hours, they would stay the same throughout the summer. In the winters, when we may look into being able to teach night lessons, but they would probably only go up until six. So it'd just be one extra hour during the winter.
Okay, so you're talking maximum of ten AM to six PM?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does the, uh, facility that you proposed, does it have walls?
The indoor arena?
Yeah?
Yes, it does.
So it's an enclosed structure?
It's a covered, correct, yes.
Okay, it's not just a roof top?
No, it's not just a roof.
Okay. So the, if any lighting that were in there, it would be contained inside?
It's going to stay in there, exactly, yes.
This is, um, a similar, uh, proposed building on the board here.
Yep, so all the lighting stays in, yes. And we will have that outdoor light just to travel back and forth from the barn to the indoor, but once we're in one of the buildings, that light will be shut off, so it will not be on all the time.
How big is that building?
It's roughly, I think it's seventy by two hundred.
Yeah, it looks bigger than what you proposed, right?
I think it was sixty by eighty, was in the, um...
Was it sixty by, or sixty by one eighty, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sixty by one eighty. It's just, I mean, we have not contacted any companies yet to put it, to build it, so we, we don't have an exact measurement of what it'll be. It definitely won't be bigger than what's been proposed. It'll be within the, the measurements.
Now, for the removal of manure, you said you have three horses currently?
Correct.
On-site?
Yes.
Have you ran into an issue where you had to, um, take the manure off property?
Not currently.
Okay.
Um, so, where the indoor will eventually be going is currently where we're composting it, so it's very flat land, there's no runoff. Um, so we have not had to remove it yet. Um, we have neighbors that are directly touching us, and they do not smell the manure at all. And they're the closest ones to us, so.
I mean, given the, given the acreage, I mean, twenty-three acres, it's a fairly large parcel.
It's a large parcel, no, I understand that.
Plenty of room to spread out. Um, I think when you get a lot of, if you have high concentrations of animals, um, with a large, the central concentration of manure on one large pile is when you start getting a lot of that smell with a, with a bigger area where you can spread it out and let the air get to it faster, that dissipates the odor, increases the biological activity breakdown, so it minimizes it. Um, and again, there's, there's plenty of room here, it's, um, to have that happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Robert, go ahead.
Um, perhaps, a note on the plan saying that the applicant will comply with the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture's Manual of Best Management Practices for Agriculture in New Hampshire. Latest revision for the handling of manure on-site could be added. That way, uh, it's got some oversight, and if there's any complaints, they can be forwarded to Department of Agriculture for their investigation.
I would say that would be a given.
Makes sense.
That's a good, good suggestion, Robert.
Now, um, Robert, this one's for you. I feel like I should know this, but has MVD had any input? I mean, I didn't even think of that, if they're storing manure on-site and, uh...
Every plan we get that has MVD water gets sent to them, and we have not received comment from them on this.
I haven't. Ms. Haley, please.
Um, has Conservation Committee looked at this as well?
Robert?
They did.
Yep, ConsCom did, and they indicated they had no concerns.
Okay, so that'll take care of the aquifer question.
Yeah.
Um, I was kind of heading where you were, Bob. Um, does it require a visit by the health inspector as well, or just the agricultural committee guidelines? I'm not, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The question about...
I mean, I, I would have a hard time thinking, the Health Department, DES, if anything.
Potentially, I don't know.
Well, our health inspector...
Oh, the town?
Yes.
Potentially DES, I don't know if the, uh, health official needs to get involved on a local level.
I was thinking, yeah, more local on the town, only because if there is a fly issue, I've dealt with horse manure, there usually isn't, right? These mine, not yours. And, so, but if there was any concern, you know, that might be a source as well. But I like the idea about putting in the agriculture.
Oh, absolutely. Board members, other questions? I think we touched upon...
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to touch upon, um, I believe it was Sandra, uh, at four, lot four oh two, she had a concern about the direction of lighting coming into the property. Looking at, looking at the first map I have here of the, the aerial view, it looks like it's a very thickly wooded area. But then when I look at the other picture here, um, somebody had mentioned that a lot of the trees were removed? And so the, um, the tree line is much thinner now?
You can see everything.
You can see everything. I, I, I can relate to that. I grew up in an area where we had street, uh, car lights coming into the windows all the time, and it, it's a nuisance. Um, I guess if you, if you do have a plan to train in the winter season, when it is darker at six o'clock, or at five o'clock, people will be coming in with their lights or not. I guess at very best, I would just like you to consider, um, you know, what they recommended there, to put in something just so as they're coming in, or perhaps re, uh, adjust the parking area, so that isn't an issue for the, you know, for your butters, if you're just out of courtesy.
So, um, regarding the tree line, when we did take down the trees that we did, we actually have a bunch of new baby pines that are growing. Um, so it is starting to add that shrubbery wall barrier back. Um, also for the parking, um, like I mentioned, there aren't really a whole lot of people coming, and if any, there's just one car coming at a time. Um, we do have a parking area right along the barn, so as they pull in, the lights are directly facing the barn, so they're not facing any houses.
Okay.
Um, we do occasionally drive down there, so the lights that they may be seeing is just ours. We check them at night sometimes in the winter, when we don't want to walk down, so we drive down. Um, but regarding the parking, most of the time, the cars are not facing directly at the houses, especially at night. We don't have people coming at night, so.
Uh, excuse me, Neil, if you can, look at sheet three of five, there's some parking shown, as she said, and it's, it's, uh, it's parallel to that back lot line, so the, the cars, if they park in the parking spaces shown here, won't be pointing in that direction at all. You see, yeah?
Well, I mean, I guess as you're pulling in...
They would be shining right down through the tree line.
Yeah, I mean, we could, that could possibly be reconfigured. I'd, I'd like to talk to one of our engineers, but I mean, if we had all the parking on the other side, um, here, you know, you would drive in and park, and then back out, and the lights, you know, wouldn't shine this way at all, because you'd drive in, and then they'd shine there, and then as you back out, they'd shine that way, so.
Just something they considered as a, you know, a courtesy to, to your butters. Because it can certainly be, you know, I, that area of town, it's dark, it's wooded, so. Uh, just a, a quick question about the, um, what you'll exactly be doing there. I know you say you're, it's a training facility.
Correct.
But with that, do you have, um, is there any kind of grooming going on? Do you, do you make, like, take, how long are the horses there when they're dropped off?
Yeah, so, um, the horses that will be on the facility will be owned by somebody who will be visiting them, so it won't be like, I'll be getting five new horses that are going to be trained for a month and then leaving. Um, so a lot of it will be like, the clients that I have, they will be eventually adopting horses and keeping them on the property for long-term. So it's not going to be horses constantly coming in and out.
Okay.
Um, so we do have, in terms of like day-to-day, um, I care for them, feed them, we groom them, work them for like thirty minutes to an hour a day, and then that's it.
Okay.
So we won't be having people coming in and out. I won't be having other trainers coming in on the property, it'll just be the horse owners and me.
Okay. And, uh, with the, being a wooded, uh, somewhat wooded site, twenty-three acres, is it going to be like, um, trail riding on your property?
So, we do currently have, there were trails on the property before we moved in, but they were ATV trails, and I don't anticipate doing any trail riding on the property. Like, we'll ride around the yard that's already cleared, but we won't be going into the woods much, no.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, would you be able to speak about the, um, the easement that was brought up?
Yeah, I just looked that up. I think that was in the submission package. Um, and I was scanning it briefly, but it looks like it's a, uh, the easement deed, um, I'm not going to read the whole thing for you, but, uh, essentially it says, blah, 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 uh, certain easement and right-of-way over lot six C three eighty-eight beginning, and then it gives a description, and it says, "This easement does not describe the right-of-way depicted on the reference plan, but is a right-of-way fifty feet in width, parallel and in part abutting said right-of-way as shown on the reference plan. This easement, which is located entirely on lot six C three eighty-eight, also butts the westerly and northerly boundaries of lot six C three eighty-seven to allow access to lot six C three eighty-seven." So, it looks like it's an access easement for that lot. Says, "This easement shall include the perpetual right to enter upon the easement and right-of-way described at any time, that the grantee or its successors or assigns may see fit to maintain a driveway and/or accessway for the benefit of lot six C three eighty-seven, as shown on the reference plan." Um, "This easement shall also include the right to do such excavating, grading, and other work as may be necessary to make said right-of-way passable."
Mm-hmm. I think we've touched upon everything that was brought up in the public session. Board members, any, um, any lingering questions? Do we have a route of action you would like to take? Would you like to take these waivers one at a time? You want to group them all as one?
Let's take them one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
Yeah.
Like, ready to entertain some motions?
All right. You want to do it? Let's see if I can do this right.
Yeah, there's a few of them. We're looking at four one six for the lights, four one four for landscape, four one two for our favorite one for fifteen-inch trees.
Yeah.
Four twelve, existing features, four seventeen, traffic, and three oh eight for upgraded driveways. Robert, did I...
Touch all of them?
Yeah, um, I wrote them down in the order they went through, so you can start with four point one six illumination plan, if you want.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we waive, um, the requirement in section four one four for landscape plan, uh, on grounds that strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Motion made by Mr. Anketell for approving waiver for section four one four for the landscape plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor of approving that waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero to approve waiver for section four one four. Which one would we like to go to next?
Right to the next one? Sure.
Uh, make a motion.
Please.
Uh, in regards to waiver, uh, four dot one, two dot C dot eighteen dot eight, uh, the requirement to identify trees greater than fifteen inches in diameter and species, um, I'd make a motion that we waive that, uh, because a strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to spirit or intent of the regulations.
Motion made by Mr. Anketell, over here, second.
Second.
I got seconded by Mr. Disco over here first, Barbara, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor of approving that waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero. Which one are we going to next?
Illumination. Sure.
Uh, let's see, section four point one six illumination plan, I make a motion that we waive the requirement, uh, because of strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and a waiver would not be contrary to the spirit or intent of the regulation.
Motion made by Mr. Anketell. Do I hear a second?
I'll second if she's, she's not awake.
Seconded by Mr. Disco.
Did you say, uh, discussion? I just would like to just put it out there again, that, not, I know we're not going to get illumination plan or anything, that I just want you to consider...
Your neighbors.
Your, your neighbors, when it does come to the lighting, and, you know, maybe put, like, the trees was a nice idea, and I think that would look really good on the property, but just, uh, just keep that in mind.
Sure.
Spruces are better than pines.
And it's also better than a fence.
I would agree. Happy neighbors are always better than unhappy neighbors as well, so, please keep that in mind.
Traffic is better.
We have a properly seconded motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining. That's six zero zero. Okay, three down.
All right, let's see. I make a motion that we waive the traffic impact analysis four point one seven. Strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit or the intent of the regulations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Anketell, seconded by Ms. Haley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero to approve the motion. Neil, you're on a roll. What do you got next?
Well, I got two more. Make a motion that we waive the requirement for proposed and existing driveways as part of a site plan developed to be constructed to the town's structural standards. Section three dot zero eight dot C five.
Motion.
Motion supportive of the strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Motion made by Mr. Anketell. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, but I want to make a comment.
Yes, I was going to make a comment as well. Nelson, please go ahead.
Yeah, well, the comment I wanted to make was that in lieu of that, they will install the twelve-inch bank run gravel and six-inch crunch gravel areas, which will be installed. So it's not a complete waiver of the section.
Right.
But they're going to substitute instead the gravel that's mentioned in this memo from Fieldstone.
We're just waiving the requirement for pavement.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So moved.
Agreed.
I agree with you, Nelson. Yeah, so moved.
Robert, did you get all that? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Anketell, seconded by Mr. Disco. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero to waive three oh eight.
Next one's the.
Parking lot mitigation, Robert. Can you elaborate on that one?
That was for the boundary survey.
One second. So the next, yeah, the next one going down my list as well. The next one I've got is four point one two point A, which is to show the full boundary on the existing conditions plan.
I also move we waive.
Motion made by Ms. Christensen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Haley. Any discussion? All in favor, say.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm not sure that I completely understand what this one pertains to.
That's not.
That's not this one.
They're just saying that they want the boundaries.
It's the boundary survey.
On here, which is not.
All right, thank you.
It's a common one. We've had that one many times before.
I just don't see it on my notes, I guess.
Any further discussion? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. That's six zero zero.
The last one on the list that I have here is four point one two point C point eighteen regarding the field location of all the features.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess not. I don't have that in front of me.
There were two C eighteen's, which may be, so we had C eighteen point V I I I, which had to do with the location of the trees over fifteen inches. Now this one is just the C eighteen itself, which has to do with the field location of features in general.
Ms. Haley.
So can I qualify, what features are we missing? This was the pool, right?
I can read the regulation. Mr. Guyda, do you have a comment?
Sure, thank you. I think the features, the only features we're not showing, again, are on the remainder part, which would be some stone walls. Yeah, and, you know, maybe some ponded areas within the body of the wetlands, things like that, that you would normally see, but there's really nothing over there. All the proposed development and existing improvements on the lot are in the area and are shown.
Go for it.
Do I hear a motion regarding this matter?
I thought Barbara was going to name it.
Your turn. I'll second.
For strict conformity would, or?
Yes.
Motion made by Ms. Haley, seconded by Ms. Christensen. Do we have any discussion, Nelson? No?
No.
All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero.
Mr. Chair, if I could go back and answer Ms. Christensen's comment. The original waiver that I said was no longer applicable, as determined by staff, was for section three point one one point L regarding parking lot mitigation requirements. That, when staff was going through it, that really is intended for larger parking lots like the shaws on DW Highway of a large open area where you're talking about breaking that asphalt up with trees and landscaped islands in between. This small parking lot, it's already hidden back deep into the lot. It's not intended to cover things like this.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have to vote on a waiver for that?
No.
No, we've just determined that a waiver is not applicable, so there's no reason. They didn't submit one and there's no action needed by the board on that.
Okay.
Now, that should have been all the waivers, Robert. Did we miss any?
No, I've got all of them down. So with those actions, if the board, so the board has a couple of options here. You can choose to continue this to see if they have to, if the applicant wants to make any revisions to the plan for the parking lot, if they want to put up the fencing, if they want to put up any shrubbery or anything like that, it's up to the board if you want to require those things. If not, then the conditions of approval that are listed in staff's memo would need some revision based on the waivers that were just granted, and I can run through that when that time comes.
Board members, do we want to have a discussion regarding the shape and direction of the parking? If we want to ask for any trees, fences?
I'm okay with the parking as shown.
I think I'm okay with it too, provided that what they said about the new undergrowth and whatnot and the trees coming in, I mean, it sounds like it would serve as a buffer to prevent any letting from getting, you know, getting through, but.
I would agree, especially since the hours of operations, they don't begin pre-six AM or they don't stretch on past five o'clock in the afternoon, so.
Okay.
I would be okay with that.
I think I'd be fine with that.
Any more discussion? So you heard what Robert just said. Mr. Guyda, would you like us to take action on this today, or would you like to make any changes to the plan?
No, I think it's substantially complete and I'm happy to have the board vote.
Okay. Board members, if we do not have any more discussion, do we have a motion being made?
Is this for final approval?
Well, this would be conditional. Then we're going to have to go through the conditions, as Robert just said, to clean some stuff up.
Okay.
Robert, I think we're at that point now.
Okay. So, one, I think the board would need to add the note that I read off earlier about compliance with Department of Agriculture manual best management practices, and I've got language for that. Two, I think the board may want to add a note on the plan specifying the hours of operation, limiting them from ten AM to six PM because they stated five to six.
I agree.
That way it covers it. Third, the board will need to delete condition of approval eleven B, because that has been waived. The board will need to delete condition of approval eleven A, because that has been waived. The board will need to delete condition eleven point C point I, that has been waived, and delete condition eleven point C point I point I, as that has also been waived.
So all of C?
Yes. The other waivers that were granted were not individually specified in the conditions, but those items were. So there's no other changes that need to be made unless the board feels anything is appropriate.
So we're deleting eleven A, B, and C in their entirety, and we're adding the ones
For the agriculture comment.
Agriculture and the hours.
Correct.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Now, for the hours, Ms. Kudalis, ten AM to six PM, that sounds fair to you?
Yes.
Board members?
Yep.
I would agree. Okay. Ms. Haley? Yeah. That being said, board members, do I have a motion?
Are we doing conditional approval, subject?
Subject to the amended. Moved by Ms. Christensen, seconded by Ms. Haley. Robert, you have all those written down, language all set. Any further discussion by the board? I would just like to say, please keep neighbors in mind. I'm always wary of, it's not necessarily commercial use, but any kind of business operations in a residential area.
Sure.
I wanted to say that you can't blame a business if you moved into a commercial district, but if you specifically purchase in a residential area.
Yeah.
I would say it's up to the business to make sure they're making everybody else happy.
Absolutely.
That being said, we have a properly seconded motion, all in favor of granting final conditional approval with the amended conditions stated by Robert. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero to grant final conditional approval. Congratulations, Ms. Kudalis.
Thank you.
Takes care of item five. Item six on our agenda is discussion slash possible actions regarding other items of concern. Robert, I did have one here somewhere in this mess of paperwork that's, I'm sure, still exists somewhere. If you can help me out while I have a little more.
I can tell you what it is.
If you could, please.
It's a recommendation for appointment of Tim Tenhav to the Nashville Regional Planning Commission.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Sounds like a good idea to you, then? Is that a motion I'm hearing? Motion by Ms. Christensen. Do I hear a proper second? Seconded by Councilwoman Haley. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. That is passed. That should, no, we do have another one, Robert.
Yeah, I have one more item. Just give me one second, then I will get there.
Okay. What do you have for us, Robert?
I believe everyone in front of you should have an eleven-by-seventeen plan that looks like this.
Yep.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
As several of you will recall, this is an aerial shot of the warehouse building at fifty Robert Milligan Parkway that was recently conditionally approved by the board.
This is a sandpit?
Yes. During that meeting, the applicant requested a waiver from section three point twelve point D two I I regarding building design standards and facades. And basically, the board denied that waiver. So what the applicant did is they went back and took a look at what the impact of that is now, strict adherence to the regulation, and they have provided, this actually kind of printed weird, so I don't know why, so I apologize for that. So what they did was provide what the strict interpretation of the regulation will look like now that the waiver has been denied. So again, I apologize for the odd printing. We couldn't get this to go right. We tried twice. So the larger box is essentially what the warehouse building is, and if you can make it out on the smaller image underneath, that's awesome because I think it's easier to follow, and I can try to walk you through this if I need to. The dark blue area on that small image is the usable space of the building now that that waiver's been granted. The gray areas are the areas that are required to be cut out to allow for the building to be chopped up. What it does is creates five seventeen thousand square foot swaths that need to be eliminated from the usable space of the building in order to strictly follow the regulation the way it's done. So what the applicant is doing is trying to illustrate what this means in the hopes that the board would see this and be willing to reconsider that waiver at a future meeting. So all I'm looking for tonight is a nod around the table that they be willing to hear the applicant coming back. The second page of that is an architectural rendering that the applicant put together, not anything to do with the color scheme, but they're thinking of something along this line that would still allow for the internal space to be a complete box while breaking up the outside wall with some different aesthetics, not carving into the building as deeply.
Who told them they had to carve into the building like that?
That's the way, the strict interpretation of the regulation, that's the way the building gets designed.
I do remember, we did deny it, but, I mean, I would still deny it today because what they were proposing was.
Yeah.
Flatly seen across.
Right.
The highway, and it was, I mean, for lack of a better term, ugly. I don't know what to tell you.
Sure. And they recognized that, and they admitted to us that they should have come better prepared to address an alternative with the board. So that is what this is an attempt to do, to say, look, we are ready to address something other than a flat, a flat, straight wall that does absolutely nothing for anybody. This at least tries to break it up. Again, we can play with color schemes, we can play with designs, but at least it makes the space more.
We may still deny it, but we can reconsider.
Right.
So.
I never got that we were imposing something like this on there for these big cut-ins. That's not my interpretation of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, where they got it. It's a, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, that's what they put together, saying this is how we're reading it and this is it. So I'm just going forward with their request.
I mean, I'm not sure about those. Just to be clear, just because the printout's a little odd. The blue space on the smaller version of it is the usable area.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm really not sure how you get that out of.
Yeah.
What we said, but I mean, I still stand. If they want to come back and try to show us something like this to put some effort into making an attractive building, then fine.
Yeah, our comments were that this building would be seen from the highway, and we didn't want it to look like an industrial.
Warehouse.
Warehouse. We didn't, you know, where people go drive by and say, boy, is that ugly.
Yeah, and you look at the plan they originally showed us. It was just one flat wall forever.
Yeah, it was ugly. So, and even, they could dress this up a little too, maybe a couple of canopies or something. But anyways, yeah, I'd be, I wouldn't be opposed to them coming back with a.
No guarantees, but.
And that's all they're looking for. They just want the opportunity to come back and
Absolutely. If they want to put some effort into the outside of the building, we'd be willing to.
Yeah, we just don't want a box.
Yeah, I will relay that.
Saw that right, Robert. That was the only other.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So ultimately, they're on the right track with this.
Yes.
And you can discuss other features with them when they come back if you decide to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last possible action regarding items of concern. We are now on to the approval of the minutes of October fifth and September twenty-first.
I move we approve both as printed.
Second.
We may have to.
Do them separately.
Yeah.
There's, no, you can do both in one.
We can do them, but I'm going to be.
Oh, you're going to abstain from one of them. Do it separately then, so it's just cleaner.
All right, I'll do the first one.
The first one being.
September twenty-first, I'm assuming. The motion made by Ms. Christensen to pass the minutes of September twenty-first. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Haley.
Just to clarify, those are the non-public minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
No, that was October nineteenth.
I think you can vote for it, then it's still abstained.
Yeah, you can second motion, just to.
I did the September twenty-first non-public session minutes. I move we approve them as printed, such as they are.
Okay, we don't have those here tonight.
Do you not have them, Nelson, I?
Yeah, they're in there.
Yeah, they're right here.
There were two sets of minutes. One is October nineteenth.
Nothing on October nineteenth.
Oh, that's tonight, isn't it?
Right.
The draft minutes of October fifth, I've got.
Nope.
They might have given you, I'm not in that one. That's for the twenty-first for the non-public.
Okay, I do remember reading this. I do remember doing, okay, you moved to approve.
Yes.
Yes, and seconded.
Correct.
And all you're asking for is a vote.
Correct. Do we have any discussion on it? All in favor of passing the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? Abstaining. That's four zero two. Ms. Haley, you abstained? Four zero two to pass those minutes as written. Last set is October fifth.
For the October fifth.
Motion made by Ms. Christensen to approve the minutes as written. Do I have a second? Did I hear another second over there? I have a second for Ms. Fonchon. Any discussion?
No.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero. Last item. Moved by Mr. Anketell, seconded by Ms. Haley. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining. Six zero zero for adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Please remember to turn off your microphones.